Colorado County Regional Planting Commission, do order please. You stand with me, I'll lead the prayer and we'll lead the pledge. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and the blessings you give us and opportunities, an opportunity to serve our fellow man. We pray that you'll just be with us this morning, this meeting, and all our deliberations be fair and just to all concerned in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Plaid allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Be seated.
Oh, whoa, please ma'am.
Rhonda Allen.
Here.
Richie Bowlen.
Here.
Veronica Buchanan.
Here.
Will Jordan.
Here.
Mike Kush.
Pettis Reed.
Here.
Steve Sandlin. Mike Vaught.
Here.
Jeff Phillips. We have quorum. And Craig Lynch.
Rest. We're going to take a motion to approval of our August 27 minutes, please.
Make a motion for a demence.
Second.
All for the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Anything withdrawn or deferred?
No, sir.
Bond plaid extensions, Lewis Down, section one, phase two, letter of credit extension for one year.
Under this extension they've asked for, there's a chance that they might not need if they get to work done, but we wanted to go ahead and put it on here. But we recommend to give them extension.
When we extend the letters of credit, it's a little bit different than a bond. Do you have an updated letter from the bank verifying?
Yes, we have an original. We keep the original. They give us an updated original and we usually, it'll usually come as an amendment to the first one. We just attach it to it and keep it in our files upstairs. And once the bond or letter of credit is either released or pulled, then we send that back to the bank. They want the original back.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a second. I'll second. All for the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Waiver request, Mr. Glenn Peterson.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this is a application by Mr. Glenn Peterson. It's a piece of property located off of Manchester Pike, which is very close to the southeastern edge of the county. The existing property, as you can see on the map in your agenda packets, is about 100 acres in size and is at the end of a private easement, which is named, it's called Mason Hollow Road. It is a private street. The applicant's proposing to purchase seven acres from the larger tract to construct a house. There are a number of issues with this particular request. First, the proposal will create an easement that accesses more than three tracts. There's already at least four tracts on there right now, five if you count the one that's the 100 acre tract. So, of course, our subdivision regulations say that you can have up to three, as long as they're all over five acres, anything above and beyond that, you start getting into other issues which we'll get into. There is only one house built currently on the private easement, but there are again four additional lots where homes could be constructed. Second issue, according to the subdivision regulations, easements that access more than three tracts have to be built to the county road specifications. That was something that was added into our subdivision regulations a few years ago. Now, again, this is, what's out there, there's already five. If they just wanted to build a house on the existing 100 acres, you know, that would be fine since it's, everything is in the current situation it's in. However, they're wanting to add an additional tract. The third issue is that the applicant's also requesting to have a fire hydrant waiver because the existing fire hydrant would be more than 1,000 feet from the properties. So, with that, I'm not sure if there's someone here representing this application or not. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, you're right there. But if you have questions, we'll be happy to answer them at this time.
How long is the easement? I mean, if the fire hydrant was even placed where there's water, it's probably not within 1,000 feet anyway, and we don't have...
Yeah, I don't think, even if you put one right on the front there, and according to information we received from Consolidated Utility, that line wouldn't support a hydrant anyway.
You say would or would not?
Would not.
So, but there's more issues here, like you said, than the fire. All I see here is for a fire hydrant waiver, we could grant the fire hydrant waiver, but then how does he get his, then what does he do from there?
Right.
If you've already got five tracts down that lot, you're going to beat him up and make him bring that road up to county standards when he's just the last one in, more or less? And I guess this is all grandfathered in, but it's all done before the subdivision regulation or like.
Well, yes, I mean, it's been in that, in its current state. Again, that provision of the subdivision regulations is only a few years old. Now, again, if they wanted to build, we're not saying that you can't build a house on the 100 acres. You know, if they wanted to build a house out there in the current configuration that it's in, we would allow that. There's no issue there because they're not changing anything. But they're requesting to take seven acres of that, which creates an additional tract. So, they'll have the seven acres in the remaining, I guess that'd be 93 roughly acres out there where another house could go, so.
There's a couple of things I wanted to add. The property...
Your name, sir?
Glenn Peterson. The owner, at least, also, it hooks in with her property that's on Sutton Branch Road. So, it's, has road frontage on Sutton Branch Road, and there's just 95 feet of road frontage that she has. And if I took 50, which is minimum, they couldn't...
Where is this Sutton Branch Road? Is this, is that, is that in the other county? Okay, okay.
It's where?
It's in the Coffee County.
Coffee County. She's planning on selling the rest of it to a landlord that lives back behind here. That's why she doesn't care. If I take the road frontage, she wouldn't be able to build a house.
If he does that, takes one, can he build that one back there then? And we're assuming that the rest of it's going the other direction?
Yeah, can we, can we put a stipulation that says, only remaining 93 acres, a house cannot be accessed from this easement?
I think you could put reasonable conditions on there. Now, I'd probably want some sort of documentation from the applicant about that remaining acreage having access to the, of course, we don't, can't really tell that by our GIS file because that's in the other county. But, I mean, if she's selling that off and it still just remains five tracts off of that easement, then I guess in that sense, it doesn't really change anything. But that, the parcel in and of itself is still in Rutherford County. So, I still think the easements would, or the waivers would still be required at this point because that tract still is within Rutherford County. Now, if you want to put that restriction on there, that you were just saying, I don't think that's...
That kind of makes it up to county standards then. And it being grandfathered in, having five, we're not adding a tract if we do that.
Yeah, let me say one thing. The easement, of course, is going to be private, and we just, we've had a lot of problems with that, and I'm not, this gentleman is fine with me if he does it. I just want to know that there's not going to be any inspection of that road and the maintenance, because we get a lot of calls on these private easements about when the county's going to take them over, because they've got potholes and they've got to be redone and all this kind of stuff. And that's one of the reasons we went back to the...
Three.
To the three, which was what we have, so.
Well, they're very problematic. There's some out in my district, and the lady a couple of years ago bought a house at the very end, and she thought she was on a public road. The mail carrier comes down that road, no, she didn't realize her water meter was way down the road, and, and she called, because the ambulance service was having trouble finding her when her husband had health issues and stuff, and she called me all upset. I said, "You're on a private road. It's all the way out on this other road." And she was, she didn't have a clue.
And school buses won't go down those roads either, I believe.
I think school bus sometimes sneaks down that road, you know, but that's what, that's what we, that's the operators, you know, thing. But if we're going to do what Mike said, we would definitely need to make sure that's okay with the owner of the larger tract, instead of, no offense to you, but, I mean, that person will need to document somehow, now they were okay with giving up their rights, instead of us doing something here and they not realize what gets done, and then all of a sudden, three or four years from now, they're saying, "Hey, I've got 93 acres. I want, I didn't know we passed something." We'd want to make sure that was, there was some documentation from the owner agreeable to that. I mean, if, if we, because I agree with Mike, they can build that many down there now.
It's a grandfather deal, is the way I'm looking at it.
But we don't want to take it away from the larger tract and give it this track without that owner knowing it. And signing off on it.
How long is the easement?
The actual length of the easement from there, off the top of my head, Mr. Bowlen, I'm not exactly sure. It's, I mean, it's a fair, fairly good amount out there, but I think it's outside of 1,000 feet, you know, so it's fairly out there.
Well, the easements are as good as the people on them, because I've got two very close to me, and they work great, but it's the people on them that make them work great, you know? And they all had that understanding going in, and that's the main thing he needs to be aware of.
Is this a time-sensitive application? I mean, is there any reason why it needs to be approved at this meeting? So, I'm just curious if we could get the information, you know, get that confirmation from the larger...
I'm not aware of anything. I mean, the applicant's, he may have information. I'm not aware of any, of any time-sensitive issues here, but...
No, she's wanting to sell it, but that'd be the only thing holding her up. What if, I have something written out, and her signature notarized.
Yeah, because I'm just not comfortable voting yes on it, and I don't want to give him a no. If everything he's telling us is true, we just need confirmation.
Right, and I think, I mean, something like this, we could probably bring about our next, our next night meeting even, just under old business, you know, before we get into our public hearings, you know, this shouldn't...
How would that need to be worded, Doug? That she gives up her right to access, play, another house off that easement?
Well, I don't, I think it's... I think it's more of a situation where she realizes that, basically stating the intention of what she's wanting to do, the remaining 93 acres is going to have access off of this other road from Coffee County. I understand that if these waivers are granted, that, you know, that there will not be another permit issued for this unless, of course, they were to build the...
Off this, off this access.
Right, unless, of course, they were to build it to county road specifications and do all that, they could certainly do that. But I think something to that effect, and we can work with the applicant as far as proper wording, but I think that something like that would be more appropriate than saying, "I'm giving up my right to something," because if they were to go through the proper channels, they could still, they could still do it, so.
I, you have a question?
I have a fire protection question, and this is not specific to this, but this makes me think in general terms. Fire hydrant's not even close. You're way out in the edge of the county, so this would be, I'm assuming, volunteer fire?
Yes, sir.
And if you have the only access to the property at a easement, which may not, depending on, like you say, if the, if the folks all keep it upgraded, but if not, let's assume the worst, and you can't get a fire truck down there, do, does the county have any responsibility? If, I mean, if we say yes, and the house burns to the ground because they can't get water to it, or we don't require sprinkler, I mean, are we held harmless in that situation?
Well, I mean, I mean, the easement is what it is. Lots are already in existence. I mean, the zoning of the property does allow for construction of a single-family home.
Yeah.
Now, as far as whether or not there's liability involved in everything, I'd probably want to defer to our, to our legal staff.
Well, I mean, maybe even in the, in the motion or the approval, do we, do we make a statement that, you know, hey, by the way, you just, you're not protected by, because of, because of the hydrant and because of its easement, and we can't guarantee access to the property with emergency vehicles? I mean, is that something you would, we should word in that?
I don't necessarily, I mean, that's not something you've done in the past with any waivers like that. I don't know if I'd really recommend starting that now. Now, I don't know if there's anything that would necessarily say in the letter we get from the applicant, just acknowledging those facts.
That could actually document that we realize there's problems there and that we were aware of.
Yeah, I guess that's really what I'm trying to get to.
So, that could actually turn against us, in my opinion, by your documenting your concerns upfront.
Yeah, yeah. What about a sprinkler? Are we, do we have the authority to require sprinkler in this kind of situation?
Well, when we, when we first looked at the sprinkler system, regulations that we have in our subdivision regulations, you know, our intent was, I mean, really for these kind of situations where you have, even if the line out front could support a hydrant, you know, you're so far away, that's just not practical to get a line up there that could support a fire hydrant, that in those situations, then yes, they would be able to sprinkle the homes. You know, in this kind of a situation, it might not be a bad idea. However, the only thing that made it into the resolution, or the subdivision regulations, I'm sorry, was the major subdivisions.
Yeah.
And for whatever reason, that was the only thing that made it in. So, if the other part would have made it in, then this would be, this would have been covered, I would have thought.
Yeah.
But, I mean, I don't think it's unreasonable, however...
But it's not by the, by regulations, it's, it wouldn't be an automatic, you'd have to have a sprinkler.
I don't believe, not the way they're currently written.
Is there any more drawings or, in other words, that's a big plaid, and I'm showing Mason Hollow Road coming off the bottom left-hand corner. You know, this may be pretty clear, depending on where this house or where this lot is. Is there a way to know where that's going to be and how, what, you know, what's already existing? It's kind of hard to...
Right, oh yeah, no, I understand. I mean, this is all the, I mean, we didn't receive anything with the application. Now, what we can probably try to do is, especially if this is deferred, that'll give us a couple of weeks to go in our GIS system and take a look. We may even be able to, the aerials may have spilled over a little bit into Coffee County. We may be able to see where that other road is that they're referring to. So, I mean, I think deferring action would allow us to, a chance to kind of get a handle on that.
I'm making a motion to defer and ask you to come back with some better maps so we can get a better look at, look at it next, next meeting.
Yes, sir.
And, and the...
Verified letter.
And verified letter.
Right.
Okay, motion to defer it.
He has something down here.
Have a second. And do you understand, with some letter documentation from the lady that owns the rest of this property, that she would be, if she comes back, she would have to use the Coffee County exits, entrances and exits instead of yours?
I think Doug can help with that.
Doug, do you get with Doug on that?
Yeah, we can, we'll work out the, the language. I'm, yeah, we can...
Throw kind of dead ends into her property, but the frontage would be what I would get, so. She could still use a rope, she can't build them.
All for the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries.
Doug, I've got a question. If this gentleman hadn't been ready to construct his house immediately, and his property owner just went to sell five acres, would that even be here off of private easement? Would that get caught when they went to register the deed?
Right.
Or you can sell five acres without having to meet any...
Well, being that it's on a private easement like this, it would have to be platted, even if, even if it was over five acres. So, now, that doesn't mean that if a deed were to be brought to the registered deeds and recorded, that then it would be caught.
Platted has got to run through your office though, right?
Yes, sir.
It has to be signed. So, it should have been caught or would have been caught, hopefully.
It should have been, yes, sir.
Just get with staff after we get to the meeting.
Yeah, that meeting will be October 8th at 6 o'clock.
Over in the courthouse.
Across the street.
All right, so we submit for preliminary approval, Ridge View at Crescent Ridge, section two.
If we, just as an order of business, if, you'll notice on the top of your plan packets there, you actually see a plaid for Valley View, section four. This is all related to this particular item, Ridge View at Crescent Ridge, but I think to be appropriate, we probably should suspend the rules to allow us to consider Valley View first, and we'll explain how this all happens, so it'll make more sense here in just a minute.
Motion suspended.
Second.
All for the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries.
Okay, when, when they brought this in, if you'll turn to the second page there of Valley View, you'll see Ridge View at Crescent Ridge, section two, and then you'll see Valley View, section four. When they, we were talking about, all of that was going to be under Ridge View at Crescent Ridge, section two. When they went to CUD, CUD wanted them to make this back portion Valley View, section four, because they're hooking into their step system. They've got excess room over there. The other part will be part of the step system for Ridge View. And so, to do that, we requested they bring in, bring them in separately, because when you vote for it, you know, you just normally take one subdivision at a time instead of combining the two. So, basically, you've got two sets of drawing. It's a situation that's only, it's an administrative type situation, and it's this way because of the requests from CUD for them to, to change what they submitted to us. That's the reason you've got two different drawings.
One-step system going one way, one-step system...
Right, the drainage stays the same, the roads are the same. The numbering of the lots are a little different because they had to conform to Valley View, but the, this is all as what, as was proposed originally in their original plan.
You know, we've already approved the first three sections of Valley View, have we not?
Yes.
Probably already, some of it's constructed out there.
Right. Most of it's constructed, Valley View.
And all this was on the major plan for that?
Right, that's correct. It's just...
I'll admit, that's an awful lot of houses off, bar filled off one entrance that I see. The back exit's going to go out somewhere, but at some point in time, but...
These back exits go through Valley View.
That was a concern a couple of years ago, I guess, though.
Right.
I believe there's already an existing one on, what is it? Is that...
Redmont.
Redmont Drive, there's already, I believe there's already existing...
That's already built that far back.
Right.
Well, you've got in and out. Ingress, egress, two ways then.
Yes, sir.
I was thinking this might be five years down the road, because it's back there at Lot 70 or something, you know, but...
All right, have a motion.
I would make a motion to approve.
Have a second.
Second.
All for the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Right now, Ridge View.
Do you all have Ridge View at your tables? Is that, is that in your pack at the Ridge View?
We have Ridge View, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, the Ridge View part, again, is, is the second, is the second part of the total package, and the, the drainage and the roads and all are the same, and meet our requirements. So, again, we recommend approval, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Was that preliminary on the one we just had?
Yes, sir.
It is, it is. It's, they're just officially breaking them into two separate...
All right, questions on this one? This will be Ridge View, the question's Ridge.
Motion to approve.
Got a second? All for the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Final plaid approval, Mearwood.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This next plaid is Mearwood, section two. This is phase one. You'll recall, the preliminary plaid for this section was approved by the county planting commission at their August 27 meeting. The subdivision is on the east side of Rucker Lane. It's also served by sewer from the city of Murphysboro. I was informed by Mr. Lewis that this was approved also by the Murphysbournes Planning Commission as well. It appears to be in good order, and we'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, questions?
Everything matches the preliminary plaid.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion for a second. All for the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Cedar Crest, Doug.
Yes, sir, thank you. This property is located on the east side of Mona Road, adjacent to the Cedar Crest Golf Course. Additional capacity has been found in the step system, so they're just adding a few extra lots to the subdivision. It's a three-lot subdivision. Adequate fire protection exists. There's two fire hydrants within 1,000 feet, really one on either side, and it appears to be in very good order, sir.
Questions?
This is exactly the same as the preliminary we did like two meetings ago, right?
Right.
What do you mean by that?
This, this, I don't think this was a preliminary. I think this is just a minor final, but it's...
We had to amend there something. We've seen this before.
Well, yeah, what we saw before was a little further up the road. This is different than that.
Oh, this is again, okay.
This is, right, it's part of this, it's right down the road from it.
Oh, I thought this was just the final approval, and the last time we had to amend these...
Right, well, right, you took that little part out of the zoning, because it was owned as a services, I believe is what it was, and they had a couple of lots. But that, that was done, actually, that was a separate piece of property.
So, this is three more lots then?
Correct. Yes, sir.
This, that was like four or five months ago.
We were adjacent to that.
First part of the summer or something.
I just remember coming through, they had to amend the site plan for the golf course to free up those trees.
Right, yeah, and then that, you're, you're correct. That was just a little further down. This is separate from that.
So, what you're saying is they found additional volume in the step system that would allow for three more lots?
Yes, sir.
Okay. How do you find that?
I think it's regulation changes regarding step systems.
Yeah, what CUD is... When they originally started, they only allowed so many houses per acre of fill line because of their requirements. And through the years, they found those step systems can support a little heavier load, and so now they've actually increased the number of units per acre of fill lines that they can support and still meet the discharge requirements. And so, this one, and it's like the Valley View one, that's, those additional lots were able to put on that, that step system because of the requirements being less as far as the number that they have to meet when they discharge.
So, is there, is there a new number, or is it, does it change a little bit?
It'll change a little bit, based on what they have. This particular step system here, the effluent goes into a pond, and they use that pond to, for the golf course itself, for irrigating. So, this one is...
The original regs were 20 houses, is that what you said?
No, I think they started out originally around 12, 10 or 12, something like that. Others, they can have more than that.
Okay.
When CUD agreed to take over step systems, to allow the county to use step system, CUD overkilled because it didn't, this is a new thing, it was new, it was uncharted waters, so it overkilled to just make sure it would be on the safe side. And so, that's what that is.
Well, the problem is, when you change the numbers, allow more houses, that's great, you can build more, but if you change the numbers down, then you've, you've got a bit of a problem. But I think we're going to see a lot of this around wherever there's land available, you know, little pieces here and there.
Is this site specific though? Or is some soil better than others, or is it just still a low number?
It will depend on soils, the specific soils, because your tighter soils, you know, 70 soils, you have fewer houses if you've got a 45 soil, so you can put more houses up.
Across the board?
No, it's not across the board. They look at each one of those individuals.
So, it's on a case-by-case basis, probably 60 or below or something.
Yeah, they, I'd say they've lowered the requirements, but still, your soils have, I mean, you can only perk at a certain rate in those soils, and so, to meet those requirements is going to be a little bit different for each one.
Yeah.
Is the motion?
Approved, to approve.
Second.
All for the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Site plan approval, Don Bruce.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, as you stated, this is the, uh, this is the site plan for Don Bruce. It's a mulch gravel and rock storage area. Uh, the property is located on the southwest side of Old Nashville Highway, near Asbury Road. Uh, this property was rezoned transportation back in May of two thousand, and received a conditional use permit for the, the type of business that he's, uh, proposing here today. There was also, uh, I'm sorry, there's also a conditional use permit for the additional outdoor storage of landscape material from the Board of Zoning Appeals in August two thousand and twelve, as well as a variance that was granted for the, uh, gravel parking area that he has proposed on the property. Uh, according to consolidated utility, that fire hydrant cannot be installed near this property, so they are having to ask for variance to that provision as well, in the, uh, from the Board of Zoning Appeals, which they are currently in the process of doing. Uh, there were issues with the landscape plan, and that which is on the second page. It's called the planting plan, on their original proposal. Looking at what they've proposed now, originally, what they were proposing to do was use the back of the, the bin areas, if you will, to act as kind of a, of a solid screen. However, that wasn't going to qualify under our regulations as, as, as an effective buffer, or effective fence. So, they have shown a six-foot privacy fence around the perimeter of the property. Uh, at least the, uh, at least the, uh, I guess that'd be the south side and the, the west side, and, uh, portions of the east side as well. And also, that reduces the amount of landscape material that they would have to put out there. There's a, a, a good amount of existing vegetation out there that they can use for the buffer requirements. Uh, after looking at what is proposed here, uh, the landscape plan appears to be in a lot better order than it was. Uh, so, uh, with that, I believe Mr. Corbett has some additional comments as well.
Yeah, we were looking at the, uh, site plan with the new, uh, highway commissioner, Mr. Brooks. The gravel here goes all the way to the edge of pavement. He would, uh, and we concur, that apron that goes to the pavement needs to be probably either concrete or asphalt, and not carry that gravel all the way to the edge of pavement. And the distance of that, uh, needs to be worked out probably in the field with, uh, with the engineer and the owner and Mr. Brooks and myself out there. So, um, we would, I would ask if you approve this as is, that it be contingent upon us working out these, these dip, the, what they're going to put in there for that apron.
Are you talking twenty feet or eighty feet?
It's about twenty feet from, we're talking, it may be a little bit more.
That's to keep track and gravel out on the highway.
Well, that plus, as you have all the turning movements in there, you'll...
Eat up the edge of that pavement.
You'll eat the edge of the pavement up, and so we need to do something to protect the pavement and...
I have a, I have a question. I'm looking, it says Stones River Methodist Church there, and it shows a building, but it shows the building running across the property line. I assume that's what it is.
It's, I, I mean, as far as how that happened, I mean, Mr. Bruce is present, he may be able to give you a little more, but it's been like that for quite a while.
Everybody knows what's going on here, correct?
Yes, yes, sir. Yeah, it's, it's been like that for quite some...
Is this across the street from the storage, your storage facility, Mr. Bruce?
No, it's, um, south toward, uh, the battlefield. It's kind of across the front.
Mr. Bruce, come on, come on, let me get you on record.
Well, I'm Don Bruce, and, um, anyway, this, um, is down the street about a thousand feet back toward the battlefield, but on the other side of the road.
On the road, okay.
It's kindly across from Travis Court.
Okay, okay. All right, I noticed it says six-foot privacy fence, and we had some issues with your privacy fence around the storage facility, if some of the staff remember, seven, eight years ago. We're going to build that a little better stand in the slab, slab wood you put up years ago around, around the, around the private, around the storage facility, I would hope.
Well, I know y'all, uh, made fun of my fence, but that fence is still there. And, uh, that, um, that was a good...
You're calling back and doing some repairs, I think.
Yeah, that was good poplar lumber, and it'll be there long, uh, after these popsicle sticks that most people put up around their, uh, residential yard. And, uh, we had that sold by the Gamble Brothers, and, uh, uh, that will last forever, you know, uh. Uh, you being an old farm boy, you should know that.
I know, well, I know it was propped up, a, a post of rocks holding it up on some spots up there for a while.
Well, yeah, occasionally, but, uh, we, we get it back up, you know, and, uh, and, uh...
Well, farm fences don't stand up held up by rocks, you know, propped up. But as long as you and staff and codes can work out the fence thing, I just want to make sure everybody's happy with what goes up out there, you know?
Okay.
Well, going back to Mike's question on the building, on the, you're going to put a six, six-foot building all the way, I mean, a fence all the way across, what's it going to do right there at the church?
I guess we're just tearing the church down. I'm just joking. Uh, I would never do anything to harm that church congregation down there. I know some of them, you know, they're, um, friends of mine, and, uh, there's nothing I would ever do to harm that congregation, but, uh, we, um, we'll certainly, uh, uh, work that out, where, as a matter of fact, if you notice, somebody else owns a little old strip of land, and they're about thirty-foot wide and about sixty-foot long, right beside the church, between me and the, and the church, and, uh, right there somewhere, yeah. And, um, so, uh, probably what we had to do is go straight back, the property line, uh, start at the road and go straight back and not fool with the church, you know, not make that offset in it.
And if, and that's, I mean, as far as staff's concerned, if he wants to do it, that's fine. We're just asked that they update the plan to show that. I mean, but I don't have any, I, I, I think that'd be appropriate.
Another little key, I mean, a little, just a little clear, cleanup. Uh, down on the bottom of the, you got the concrete screen wall, and you got a, you got it pointing actually to the setback line, that actually probably, I think it needs to come up to the back of the concrete.
See at the very bottom?
Are you on page one, or are you still on page, are you on page two?
Page two. It says plant yard B, type three buffer, and there's, that's the one that has like the seven bins.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I see what you're saying. Yes, sir. Yeah, I, I, I think what happened originally was, the, the original landscape plan that was submitted, those, uh, bins, if you will, were actually a little closer to the property line. They had to be shifted up to allow for more space for the landscape yard, so they probably just forgot to extend the line. Yeah, that, that can be taken care of easily.
I, I'm, I'm just curious, how does the Stones River Methodist Church property boundary extend over the line like that? How does that happen?
Mr. Bruce, you're probably more familiar than I am.
Well, you researched this, uh, quite exclusively with, um, Mr. Jones several years ago, and, uh, we could never come up with where they bought a permit to build that. And, uh, so, um, it was one of those deals, uh, where the congregation got together, you know, the men on Saturday or something, and they was going to build an addition on the church, and, uh, um, they just got across the line there. And, uh, if you look real close at the power line, it'll show that the power line drapes across
Corner.
The corner of the building back there, you know, or the easement for the power line would. And, um, so I'm sure, um, if they had got a legal inspection, that the legal inspector, inspector would have caught that also. But, um, um, it's no problem for me, anything they've done down there, um, and, uh, I know, like I say, I know some, some of those members down there, and, uh, I consider them good friends of mine, and, uh, you know, um, and, um...
Okay, and, and Dell, your, your concern on the entry is that that may need to be concrete or something a little wider also, to get heavy equipment in and out?
The width is probably okay, it's just the depth we're going to look at either.
So, you, you're not, are you saying then, it's just really the apron part? You, you're not necessarily concerned about the whole?
Right, that's correct.
Okay, because that'll just be gravel, I would assume.
It's gravel. That whole site, and I've walked that site out there, most of it is a slab of rock, anyway, and so it's, uh...
So, are you, are you, like, would your desire to be something as far back as the, uh, the setback?
No, a- again, it would be, and again, talking to Mr. Brooks, uh, we're looking at twenty or thirty feet in there, probably.
All right. So, that, that's one issue that you had, and was there another?
That was, that was the only one we had.
Doug, did you have something else?
I mean, just the landscaping plan, but they seem to have gotten that under control, so...
Okay.
Any permanent buildings on this site, and will there be any constructed?
I think most of them are just storage, existing storage bins.
Will there be any type of offices or anything?
I don't believe so.
How will they conduct business? I'm just curious.
Um, Mr. Cannon, the guy that's going around the businesses here, and, uh, he can explain how your, how his business works, and, um, and, uh, I think he does about everything on the internet, you know?
Okay.
So, um, uh, I'll let him, uh, say, uh, what he, uh, is going to say.
Yes, sir, come forward.
Yeah.
My name's Josh Cannon. Um, we'll have a, the little mini barn, will just be a, like a makeshift office, just, just to have like a, uh, computer or something in, and a desk, basically.
So, it's not for storage, it, it'll just be for your office and...
Yeah, yeah, just a, like, just a little, a little bitty, mini, mini portable building.
Uh, just, uh...
I've seen that done, I was just curious, was that...
Just so you understand that that will, they'll still have to build the building code, the, any, I mean, if you're going to be using it for occupancy, you know, if you're going to have it like that, I mean, there's something you want to work out with David Jones before you, you do that.
Uh, yeah.
If they have a port, if they don't have a perk site, they have to have, like, some sort of facilities, like a ported body or something like that out there.
I mean, something to that, again, Mr. Jones can, can help with that, but...
Will, will you be doing any onsite sales or, uh, anything like that, such as to consumer or just to commercial landscapers, or what?
Yeah, not at this, we won't be doing any retail at this time.
Okay, any other questions?
Doug, with the previous approvals, um, have they already set boundaries for, or the expectations for, um, hours of operation and sign, sign location and lighting and lighting and all that?
Right, well, when we went to the Board of Zoning Appeals, I don't have the conditional use permit right in front of me, but, uh, I mean, I would imagine those things were, if they weren't discussed, then they probably didn't feel that there was enough, uh, concern for them to put any kind of conditions like that on there. So, I mean, from what I sounded, what they're, what they're doing, I don't think there's, uh, I don't think it's going to be anything, it's going to be like late night kind of a thing, or anything like that.
I'm just thinking with the big trucks and gravel and your moving stone, it just reminds me of, you know, rock quarry type activity, and that can have an impact on neighbors, and so, a noise, and so...
Right, of course, there won't be any extraction on this property, that's right, just storage.
Which is to hear the beep when the trucks back up and that sort of thing.
Okay, other questions?
Well, to, I'm just trying to clean things up. Uh, besides the entryway that Dell's got a, a concern about, uh, I, I think I heard an agreement that the privacy fence on the east side then would run fairly straight from the corner property line up by Old Nashville Highway, uh, down to the back of the property, which would then offset that little skew and take it away from the church corner. Where, everybody's in agreement with that? And the last thing, we do have specific fence types for privacy fence.
Yes, sir.
And, um, I was a little confused about the very beginning about his current fence.
Well, they're really...
This will have to meet current?
That's correct, right, and, and, and I apologize, I may not explain it real well. What they were wanting to do originally was use the back of all those bins to kind of act as a fence, if you will.
Right.
Of course, that wasn't going to meet the intent of our regulations, so that's why the fence that they're proposing is, is shown on the plan now.
Okay, and that, just so you, I can hear you say it, the fence will have to meet current?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Standards, okay. All right, then I will make a motion to approve, based on Dell's, can, Jamie?
Say something right before you do that. I, I want to make sure that if, if in fact, the owner comes back and like Will was saying, if he ends up not doing the fence, and we do, we meet the landscaping buffer, but we put the shrubs and evergreens, we will be fine, we won't have to come back to the body.
Right, no, I, I don't think so, yeah, if, if it's meeting the regulation, then...
I just want to make sure if he removes the fence, he put back the required shrubs and trees, we're okay.
Right.
So, if I, if I understood that right, it's going to, it's got to be screened, whether it's natural or man-made?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Motion still okay?
Motion's still, yeah, based on Dell's comments, and then straighten the fence out away from the church property.
All right, do you have a second? Opposed, no. Motion carries. Last reports?
Uh, I don't have any reports unless you all just have questions, or so.
Anybody have anything?
Doug, how soon were you going to give us a draft of the, um, subdivision regulations? I know you said you had something prepared, that we're about to...
Uh, hopefully, let's see, tomorrow, next month, I'm sorry, but hopefully at the next meeting, we should be able to have something for you. Yeah, I apologize, we haven't had any chance to get anything together for this meeting, but...
Okay, anybody else have anything?
Next meeting's on the eighth, and...
Yes, sir.
Then the second meeting next month will be on the twenty-second.
Sounds right.